Yep.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Can we stand for a moment, a silent court, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, there are no proclamations and no interviews, so we'll go to the consent agenda. Items two through thirteen B, considering to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an agenda item, please come forward as I read that item. State your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Two is reading of the August tenth, fourteenth, sixteenth city council minutes, and I think I missed one of those, the sixteenth, I will abstain. Three is a resolution authorizing fire rescue to apply for an impact match grant from MUR to help purchase four mechanical chest compression devices. Four is a resolution scheduling a meeting of the authorization of loan and disbursement agreement and issuance of sewer revenue capital loan notes. Five is a resolution approving a partial settlement of a claim and authorizing payment. Six is a resolution rejecting the bid received for the Headington, excuse me, Headington Park splash pad project.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is Matt here? Okay, Angel, you're filling in. I just want to make a comment about the Headington Park splash pad.
Yes.
The timing's everything, and it appears that this just came in at a time that we're experiencing high bids, high costs. And the thing I'm concerned about, and I'm not saying that staff or that council or mayor would do this, but I wouldn't want to shrink or make smaller the footprint of the splash pad. I think that they should, they and all neighborhoods should have similar sized splash pads for everybody. So I hope we don't pare that down so that it's smaller, but I understand, and I think there was only one bid, and I want to thank that bidder for submitting a bid, but it's just unfortunate, and I'm hoping maybe with time, depending on what the neighborhood would like to have or what the citizens want, but I'm hoping with time that we might see those, some of those prices come back down. Because Matt Salvatore gave us a comparison of what we did in 2017, and I know it's six years later, and we have a whole different climate, but it was just really a really contrast in prices. So I just want to make that comment because there was something in there about maybe reducing the size of the footprint, and I hope we don't do that.
Sure. Mayor, Council, Angel Wallace, Parks and Recreation Manager, and that is correct. When we constructed the lead splash pad, it was substantially lower than the bid that we received. It was around $251,000 for the entire construction project for that splash pad. What we're planning on doing, we understand that footprint, you know, wanting to have something comparable to our other splash pads. We will be holding a public input meeting with the residents and the neighborhood to present them with some options to make modifications to the park. If they do want to proceed with a splash pad, similar to what we bid out for, it may be some years down the line if they're willing to wait for that. We're not sure. But we're going to also propose maybe some spray features instead of having all the amenities, possibly improvements to the playground, basketball court, things of that nature. So we're planning on doing that here in the near future.
And council will get notice of that meeting, won't we?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, we're thinking around October is what we're looking at.
I appreciate that, Angel, because yeah, I'd, like Dan, I guess, you know, you want to be able to offer similar amenities to different neighborhoods too, but I just, the concern I would have is surely in the time I've been on council, I haven't seen prices go down, and I understand that lately there was a spike that was obviously, you know, higher than inflation and out of our control, but I didn't, it's, yeah, I'm optimistic that it will come down, but I don't know by how much and if it would be in the range of what we'd be able to cover. And so I appreciate the flexibility to somewhat look at that and ask the neighborhood, you know, how long are you wanting to wait, or if we could do this, would that work? But.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that conversation with the neighbors.
That's not going to come down, but.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, I talked to another contractor that had it all ready to bid, and it was so far over budget, he didn't submit because then he exposed his bid. So it's going to be in this range when we rebid it, unfortunately. So we, you know, we've either got to listen to the neighborhood and see if that's what they want, and then find money in the next CIP, or I don't know what else you do, but I don't think it's going to come down, not that much.
Well, maybe some spray features, some sort of water feature without having all the bells and whistles, unfortunately, and then some other modifications hopefully be presented.
Some other improvement.
Yep.
But keep in mind, the engineer's estimate was $400,000. I mean.
Then he ought to be a contractor.
Yep.
The engineers always have these estimates, they should go in the business because they're obviously smarter than the contractors, but.
That's just.
Thank you, Angel.
Shocking.
All right. A to resolutions adopting plans and specs for the Digesting and High Strength Waste Receiving Improvement Project. Nine, items nine, A to F are motion setting dates of terms to be served for the previously selected appointees to the Human Rights Commission. Ten are action.
Mayor?
Yep.
Just checking, did you read Agenda Item seven?
Yeah, I'm going to write now. Resolution amending the Parks and Recreation Department payroll complement by reducing part-time, full-time labor positions and adding a full-time labor supervisor.
Thank you.
Ten are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporary closing various streets on September eighteenth for the Briar Cliff University Founder's 5K.
Mayor, Council, Angel Wallace, Parks and Recreation Manager, does need to make an amendment to that street closure request. I was contacted by Briar Cliff, and they wanted to make a modification to the West Clifton closure. So that amendment would be the closure of West Clifton Avenue from Rebecca Street to Idlewood Street to extend that closure on West Clifton, and the reason for that is to allow access to the Perry Creek Trail.
I'll move that amendment.
Second.
Moore?
I have to abstain, conflict of interest.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
B is a resolution temporary closing various downtown streets and alleys on September second for the Sioux City Baggers Tournament. C is a resolution temporary closing various streets on September thirtieth for the Starfest Marching Band Competition and Fundraiser. Eleven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to journey construction for the wastewater treatment ultraviolet disinfection project. B is a resolution approving Amendment Number One to the Consulting Services Agreement for DGR Engineering for Court Street Section 130 Improvement Project. C is a resolution approving a master services agreement for KPA Services for Software Administration System for Employees Environmental Health and Safety Compliant. D is a resolution approving a joint city-county agreement with Woodbury County consenting to the inclusion of the South Bridge Number Two Urban Renewal Sub area into the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. E is a resolution scheduling a hearing on the proposed Amendment Number One to the amended and restated Donner Park Urban Renewal Plan. F is a resolution approving a contract of vector construction for the Martin Building Basement and Subbasement Structural Concrete Repair Project.
Mayor, I need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest.
Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. Thirteen are boards, commission, and committee meeting minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero fourteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Military Road and Castleland Street Storm Sewer Repair Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving the proposal to sell property adjacent to 115 Palmetto Street. The petitioners Ralph and Deborah Modlin. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard, the public hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero sixteen is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property abutting 2105 Everett Street and authorizing a city deed. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero seventeen is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property abutting 2200 Kellogg Street and authorizing a city deed. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard, the hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero eighteen is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property abutting 1915 Everett Street and authorizing a city deed. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero nineteen is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property abutting 2214 Kellogg Street and authorizing a city deed. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty is a resolution amending Resolution 2021-0739 to update the preliminary allocation of funding for coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds by redistributing the amounts originally set for projects. I'll move that.
I'll second it. Mayor, I have a question for Teresa. I thought I brought it with me, Teresa, but just recently, like in the past couple of weeks, there was a summary of these funds have been allocated.
Teresa Pitch, Finance Director.
Yeah, is this consistent with those, with that? I wish I could give you the date, but I don't have it.
Actually, no, I didn't make any adjustments on that because we didn't have any approvals. So there weren't any approvals to adjust and reallocate, but most of the items that are listed here had not been started, so that's why we reallocated them out because they hadn't been started. It was concerned that they wouldn't be allocated out or promised prior to the date.
Do you mind just highlighting some of the?
Yep, so if you look at it, it's actually highlighted or should be highlighted, those that it made changes, because we're making so many adjustments and changes, I asked for them to leave them highlighted.
They were highlighted.
So they should be on there, and I can go through that for you, but we had, in the investment to Watersu and Broadband, we had identified utility improvements that was supposed to be for housing developments. We reallocated out $700,000 because it was approved for the West Middle Site, so that's sitting there, and it's actually promised to the West Middle Site now. And then down below, there is one that should be highlighted, I hope it is in your homework, but the asset renewal, we adjusted that by a million dollars that we moved from the Forty-Eighth Street pressure. The UV treatment was increased by $3 million. That came from the South Bridge drainage ditch. That was initially four million, but it was moved to a million. And then the air guard water pipe restoration, that was adjusted and moved to the well replacement program for $300,000. That had already been paid for, and they weren't aware that it had already been included and paid for. So those are the adjustments that were made. The next time that you get your update from me, it will include those changes on there, but I did not do that because we hadn't approved the reallocation yet.
Okay. Well, I sure appreciate those updates as well, including what's being done here today. So thank you.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Passes five zero twenty-one is a resolution awarding and towing and wrecking services contract to Meyer Towing for the beginning of August thirtieth, 2023, and ending August twenty-ninth, 2026, but I'll move to amend the contract. Final date will be June thirtieth, 2026, so I'll move that as an amendment first.
June thirty, 2026?
Yeah.
Second that.
On the amendment.
O'Kane?
Mayor, I don't want to be a follower, but I'm here on the Stockton Towing.
Yeah, I know, we're setting the guidelines for the date. I'm going to go back to the original motion, so you guys will know to come up.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Now, I'll move the motion as amended.
Second.
Okay, now you can come up.
Good afternoon, I think most of you know me, I'm David Reinschmidt, Berman Reinschmidt, Mayor, Council. I'm here on behalf of Stockton Towing. I'm, I don't know how involved the city council has been involved in this towing project, but it has been fraught with a lot of lack of clarity and just confusion. And I just want to briefly run through the timeline, and then we'll get to where we are today. The timeline was, the contract with Myers was up about a year ago, and when it was up, and by the way, I've sent a letter outlining all this to Mr. Vlahoulis on August ninth, 2023, in which we then, we laid out this, the events of the past year with, with the conclusion that we wanted for this to be rebid, and then Ms. Dubois, that was on August ninth, and I'm happy to email that to everybody. On August eleventh, Ms. Dubois responded and said the staff was going to recommend that Myers get the bid after all, as the presumably low bidder. So back to a year ago, there were, there were problems with the then bidding process, it was confusing. Stockton raised issues that it was a complete lack of clarity on who was the low bidder, who wasn't, and because at, on some of the items, Myers had actually bid zero. So then it was bumped first for sixty days, and then ultimately it was bumped for a year to be rebid. And so it was rebid, I think it was supposed to be rebid, and April, June of this year, well, then there was an extension, and ultimately, there were two submitted bids on about July twenty-fifth, 2023. And even at a pre-bid meeting prior to that, there had been confusion about, well, what, how do, how is this bid going to work, and what would be deemed to be the lowest bid? The bottom line is that within the bidding documents, there is a contradiction in the terms. In the bidding document, it says that if you are the lowest on Schedule I, which is just the dollars per tow, not a total amount, not the aggregate, just the dollars per tow, the lowest bidder then wins. And that is set forth. That is set forth on page ten, under subparagraph three, and that's set forth in my August ninth letter, it says, three period, quote, "The contract will be awarded to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder who is in compliance with the bid requirements. The bidder with the lowest total on Schedule One shall be awarded the contract subject to city council approval," period, unquote. The amounts for each of these different types of toes, and there's a number of categories that were added in this last bidding in July of 2023, when you added the amounts of the individual bids, and bear with me on this, these are accurate numbers, Myers came in at $600 total when you added up all the different forms of towing, and Stockton came in at minus 200. They had actually bid below zero. My client had bid below zero on some items. That was acceptable. Myers had bid zero on some, we bid below zero on others. Zero on some, below zero on others. So if you look purely at Schedule One, Stockton wins unquestionably.
Sir, may I ask, how is it possible to bid a negative number?
Because what they do is they, let's say there's a number, based upon the number of, based upon the, I'm sorry.
Would it credit it back, or what?
No, well, based upon the, you could call it credit, I suppose, but based upon the number of toes, let's say on that particular item, the number of toes was going to be thirty. So they knew, yes, they're going to lose money over here, but then over here where they're bidding more, or certainly bidding above zero, they're going to make money.
I'm not, we're going to, we give so much time, and we're going over, but this was the problem last time, so then Stockton complained and said, that isn't fair, so we've got to be more realistic about how we bid this to reflect the number of actual toes. That's what happened a year ago. That's where all this controversy started, is these guys totaled up that number. Now, all of a sudden, you want to go back to that. I mean, that's not.
I'm looking at the contract.
Well, I'm looking at where it says, well, I don't know.
The contract says Schedule One wins.
You know what, if I never had to do another towing, I wish this would run for about ten more years, so nobody'd have to deal with towing contracts and dog catcher contracts, because every time we get into one of these deals, this is exactly what happens. You guys all had a chance to sit down in a room and go over this, but here we are. Somebody didn't get treated fairly. So go ahead.
Well, the simplest would be, and I'm talking, Mr. Peters is here, the safety manager, and the simplest would be, like other cities in the area do, like Sioux Falls, they rotate.
And nobody, you, the two of you couldn't come together. The chamber brought you down there, tried to get you to go together and do that, and you guys couldn't come to that agreement. So that's why we're here where we're at today, right?
Well, I think the rotation would work. That's what I've talked to Stock, I've talked to Mark Stockton, I've talked to Chad Peters.
How does it work?
On every car.
When I get to, I know how it works, but Dan and I get in the wreck, you pick up Dan's, and Myers picks up mine, and I get charged nineteen, he gets charged a hundred and a quarter. How's that going to work?
Well, I guess my first question would be, why does it, Matt, why is the city saying, telling the private sector what, or telling me as a citizen, like I'm, I'm Dave, you pick, one picks me up for twenty bucks, the other picks up the other guy for fifty bucks?
I'd like to get out of it completely, you're right, but it's not going to happen. So, but that's what I mean, now you say, well, split the contract, your prices are here, so one of you is going to get a hundred and a quarter, one of us is going to get nineteen.
But I think what he is saying, are you saying you would negotiate a rate in both companies?
Well, then they should have done that. They should have got together and do that.
I know, I agree with what you're saying.
City just sets, city just sets an amount, and then that's the amount. And if you can't, if you're, if you're a towing business and you can't make it at that, you don't. If I'm a new upstart, I'm now the third in the, in the city, and I bid, and I can't do it, well, I guess I'm, you know, I'm going to go out of business on the rotation.
Spiro, you want to explain kind of your side of that or angle of the bidding process, or get us up to date on that, from your perspective?
You know, we had the pre-bid meeting, I believe it was July, I don't have the exact date, but there were some questions that were brought up, and Stockton did email everything to us, and those were addressed in the addendum, and they did bring up at the meeting the possibility of sharing, excuse me, and that was brought out in Meyer Towing, so they didn't want to share, so that's, we proceeded with the bid process. In the bid process, the bid packet was, was addenda, had an addendum where we did it based on, I think about five, six categories, based on what the numbers that we had available for fiscal year twenty-three. And we did say that at the, on the line fif, excuse me, page fifteen, it does state, you know, for bid purposes, the following will be used to evaluate bids, and we did have each line and each number that was available in twenty twenty-three.
Your client not get page sixteen?
Yeah, our client got page fifteen and sixteen, got the entire theme, but it's contradictory. It contradicts page ten, which is Schedule One, Schedule One prevails.
An addendum will take precedent over the original, with not, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just kind of practice law when I shouldn't, but I do know quite a bit about contract or contract bonds, and failure to acknowledge an addendum is a reason to kick your bid out.
I'd say this addendum is an addition, it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't, it, it creates confusion by the addendum. It doesn't, it doesn't, in nowhere does it either explicitly or implicitly say, well, this overrules what's said on page ten about Schedule One. And the irony is, the city had, our staff had a year to do this, and still we're here.
Okay. Anyone else be heard?
Do you want to say anything, Chad? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else be heard, we can vote. Passes five zero. Any citizen concerns? Please come forward if you have a concern as a citizen. Seeing none, Mr. O'Kane?
Wednesday, school starts up. We are in triple digits for the heat, and I can attest to the temperature at West High, as I am sure most of our aging school buildings. Stay cool. Send your kids in appropriate clothing and be ready, because it's hot.
Back in the day, we used to go to school without air conditioning, and we didn't get out for the heat, so.
I went to Smith LMS. I know, I know.
Ms. Shaner?
I don't have a lot today, but I did not want to interrupt the flow of the consent agenda, but I did want to just say, item under eleven D, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that it's a joint project once again with the county. And you know, I just feel like we're working better than ever with these projects for the county that just are going to help grow and make our community better, and I get it, we represent the city, they represent the county, but we really are together, and this is another proof of that. So I really appreciate that we're working better together and more often.
Still my only comment, but you're exactly right. I appreciate you.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Alex?
Um, I actually think I brought everything up that I had with staff, so yeah, stay safe, because it's extraordinarily hot out. I know at Move-In, we had a number of people that were experiencing health, health-related issues because of the heat moving in and doing a number of things, so definitely limit your time outdoors, and I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention your pets. I don't know about all of you, but even my, my pup doesn't like being outside when it's this hot, and I can tell she gets pretty hot pretty quickly, so make sure that they're not in your vehicles, especially for any length of time in this heat, but then, yeah, please just limit, limit everyone's time outside and be conscious of your neighbors, check in on them. That's all I have.
Dan? Two things, Mayor. First one's a takeoff on what Councilmember O'Kane brought up, and that is, in addition to schools starting Wednesday, be sure and watch for traffic and watch for school buses with the extended arm and the red lights. And please, please do not speed in school district, school zone areas. It's a, the kids won't be paying attention, and a lot of people won't be paying attention. It's going to be really important to start that on a good foot on Wednesday. It's going to be really important to start that on a good foot on Wednesday. Secondly, I attended the opening reception at the Sioux City Art Center of the Tao Nguyen Vietnam Peace Project. It's an excellent, it's an interesting project, and it's very excellent. Tao Nguyen explained it that he wanted people to see how beautiful his country is and how beautiful the people are. My generation, we hear Vietnam, and we think of nothing but war, and, and it was really enlightening, and I, so I would all encourage, I'd encourage all of you to go see his exhibit at the Sioux City Art Center. It's there till the middle of January of two thousand twenty-four. That's all I have, Mayor.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Hey, Janelle.
Miles with Mike.